So greetings for those that are watching this and members of Corpus Christi for Unity and Peace. We have with us here Jenny Brake, Greg Brown and Adam Sharp. They are running for the Carmel Clay School District Board. And I've gotten to know each of them. I have been pretty active in getting involved in as a Carmel citizen and as a grandparent to understand what's going on with the Carmel Clay Schools and how it affects us as citizens because we should all care what happens to the children in our city. Because first of all, they one day will be running our city. But they are, they're the future. They're the future of our great state. So Jenny, Greg and Adam, I'm delighted to welcome each of you to our special cup interview. Corpus Christi for Unity and Peace was founded right here in Carmel, Indiana. It has a very strong supportive membership base here and we're trying to fight for liberties and family. We all recognize, and I'm sure you'll agree, that family is the bedrock of our nation. And as the family goes, so goes our nation. And we've, we've seen this. We've seen this across our country sadly, especially over this last five years. So, so some of my questions, they're going to be centered on how you will actively engage and include parents so that children can thrive in the school environment. So, welcome. Welcome Jenny, welcome Greg, welcome Adam.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So my first question is about each of you. Not everyone knows you, so please, would you just take a few minutes to describe yourself? And please include a little bit about your family and maybe how you've served in the community? And if you've worked professionally?
Okay.
Ladies first.
Hey, well, I'm Jenny. Jenny Brake.
Hi Jenny.
I have been in this community seemingly forever. Actually, from I attended Carmel schools from grade school all the way to high school. My, a lot of my extended family still lives in Carmel. I followed my boyfriend off to college and we came back, we got married. So I married my high school sweetheart, raised our kids in Carmel, and now it's another generation coming up. So we're raising grandchildren in Carmel. So you can take it by that, that I never moved anywhere else. I've always stayed in Carmel and I love, love the city, watched it grow. There wasn't a single roundabout when I was in elementary school and Carmel's, Carmel's grown quite a bit. Love the community, was involved with my kids and, you know, brownies and, you know, activities that were, were centered around the kiddos. And, and now I get a chance to be an influence in my grandchildren. So that's pretty fun. So, and I went off to IU, came back. I've been involved in community broader. I've been involved in like Hartland Film Festival for many, many years. That was a really neat opportunity and I've been employed locally at a home builder, a couple of home builders actually in Carmel. And, and also for the last, you know, 15 or so years, I've been involved in our church on staff. I'm not anymore, but that was my last job was
Oh, great.
Kind of the hospitality and the guest services in a, in a large church in Carmel.
Well, that's great. That's great Jenny. I also got involved in the Brownie Troops. And, and that is the heart of community right there, helping our kids at the most local level because boy, that's right in the heart of the community and serving and trying to help kids understand to have a servant's heart. And, and church is where it's at, right? Because you're trying to help people understand how we, how we serve God and serve community. So good for you. Great.
I can go. Hi Vicki, this is Greg Brown. And I've moved here 28 years ago on a job transfer. And was working near downtown so we could pick whatever city we wanted to pick in to live in. And we chose Carmel because of the schools. We had a little four-year-old boy who's now a 34-year-old man. And so he went to Forest Dale and Clay and Carmel High, graduated middle of seven. We had just a great experience. So much collaboration with parents and my wife spent a lot of time with the PTO and the teachers. And then I did some volunteering with the school and some IT things. And then as our son grew older, got involved in Scouts, I was a Cub Scout, Den Leader and Assistant Cub Master. And then I was a, as he went into Boy Scouts, I was the Committee Chair and then became Assistant Scout Master. Then I became Scout Master in the Carmel Troop and had a really incredible time with that. And quite active at our church, was on the Board of Elders for four years. And then did some, led some fourth grade Sunday School classes and a lot of other volunteering work. Put a big giant sound system and had an engineered new system of the church. And so my, a lot of my volunteer time is at church. I worked in manufacturing and retired now for about 34 years, medium of large-scale companies, primarily IT Director. And we wrote software, we did all, we wrote software, we put networks in, put mainframe computers and PCs and changed people's mouses when they went out. We did kind of the whole gamut. And it's a pretty good leadership there, brought us into the internet before competitors and, and had some pretty good success with that. I, I guess I could, we don't want to talk about why we're running at this point, just a little bit about us. I do have a wife Kelly and a son, I mentioned Garrett. We have, he's living in Carmel by the high, high school with his lovely wife Becca and our wonderful 15-month-old granddaughter that we get to babysit. Yeah, she's amazing. We get the babysitter three times a week, the whole day. In fact, I'm supposed to be there right now, but I figured
We pulled you away from that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. That's okay. I was away from it because of our meeting Adam mentioned, but I figure November 9th, I'll get back on schedule with, with that.
Yeah.
So it's a great time. We just had a great time here in the community. It's a great city, it's great schools. We just want to keep it that way.
I gotta tell you, I mean, I'm just hearing these are fabulous backgrounds. I, I don't think folks that are listening to this, how important it is that we reflect on these backgrounds. Here is a man who served faithfully in a leadership role in Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts. This is teaching kids responsibility, honor, dedication. And, and these are skills unfortunately, now kids are learning about social emotional learning and empathy and, you know, how, you know, all of these things that unfortunately are not going to help them succeed in, in being independent in their lives. And, and yet the things like Boy Scouts and even when they get to Eagle Scouts, these are the things that help children really thrive and succeed in life. And then you talk about being an elder. I don't, I mean, I had a friend, I mean, I worked in the insurance industry. He was an elder. I, I don't think people realize the dedication that one has to have to serve in that leadership role in a church. I mean, it is, that's like serving in a very dedicated leadership role. And, and, and I, I think these are important things that people from at least a faith-based background want to know that as you're going into a board position, that you're bringing the wholeness of yourself for you Greg, good for you. So I'd like to shift now to Adam.
Sure. Hey Vicki, nice to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you Adam.
Yeah. Thank you for taking the time to do this. I think it is important that folks get to know us as people and understand our positions. That's not always easy to do these days, especially given that none of us are huge social media posts. So about myself, I was actually originally born South African, immigrated to this country when I was five years old. First to Monroe, Louisiana, and then up to Indianapolis a couple of years later when my father got a job here in Indy. So I grew up on the north side of Indianapolis off of 79th Street, went through the Washington Township School System, graduated from North Central in 91. And from there I went down to Bloomington, got a BS in Biology and headed off to med school after four years in Bloomington. And I was a little bit adventurous, which was one of the best decisions I ever made. I decided to go to Israel for four years and got my MD from Tel Aviv University. It's this program they run there for, for Americans. That was a great educational decision. It was also a fantastic personal decision. I'm Jewish by background and being able to kind of connect with Israel and become a lifelong supporter of Israel was a real gift to me at that point in my life. From there I went to Milwaukee, Wisconsin, where I did my training in emergency medicine at the Medical College of Wisconsin. Finished that circuit 2002. And I was still ambitious to go and explore the world a little bit and wanted to be in a city with other young folks of similar backgrounds. So I headed off to Boston, didn't really know anyone there, but decided it was a really cool city and took my first job as a physician, a practicing physician in a small hospital just outside of Boston. About a year into that, I met my wife in Boston. She had grown up there. Coincidentally, she was an immigrant to the country too, from the Ukraine when she was two years old. Moved the exact same year, the exact same month to the
Oh my word.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of crazy that way.
I didn't, I never knew this. Wow.
Yeah, yeah. So she had, she had been raised by her mom who had brought her to this country, not speaking a word of English as a single mother. Her mother is an incredible person in that she was able to work hard and succeed and, and give her daughter an amazing, you know, life in, in Boston. And so shortly after we met and decided we wanted to, you know, continue on together, we made the decision to move back here because I have a fairly large family, three siblings. They were all here in Carmel. And we thought, you know, how can we possibly find a better place, not only to raise our kids, but also to be close to family. So we moved back to Boston circa 2002, 2003. And I took a job as a full-time emergency medicine attending at St. Vincent, where I remained for the, for the last 20 years. So I worked at our trauma center in St. Beast Carmel, Fishers. And I even went out to a small hospital, one of my favorite places to, to work professionally was out in Elwood. Very down-to-earth people, very grateful of us being out there and providing them, you know, the services that we did. And while I was practicing emergency medicine for all those years, I also have a bit of an entrepreneurial flair. So I co-founded a few healthcare internet technology companies, cloud-based platforms based out of Boston. And so I got to know that flight very, very well over the years. And most recently had an exit, our last company with that, that we, that we built was acquired. And I'd actually already made the decision personally to move on to new things in my life and had decided to step away from clinical medicine. So I did that early this year and in the thinking leading up to deciding whether or not I wanted to run for school board, I had to have that, you know, honest conversation as I'm sure Jenny and Greg did too with ourselves as to, do I have the time? Do I have the appropriate capacity to really focus on this and give it a hundred percent? And so that sequence of events enabled me to kind of get, gain comfort with the fact that yes, I do. I, you know, I don't have a whole ton of obligation, you know, I have some, I'm not officially retired, but I do have enough bandwidth to give this the due attention that it, that it needs in order to really be impactful. And yeah, I, I met Greg just through networking and hearing about other people that may be interested. And then he and I met Jenny and the three of us really felt that we had complementary skillsets. Very, you know, not, not a hundred percent aligned perspectives as no people should. There should always be for debate and discussion and different perspectives. But, you know, relatively aligned perspectives as to how we feel should, should approach the education of our children. And that brought us to this adventure.
Yeah, that's, that's a great intro. And, and the thing that I really, I want to, I want to pluck out from that too is, you know, you immigrated, you know, your wife immigrated. You know, a lot of the banter that's going back and forth, you know, is how, how can we represent the disenfranchised? Those, you know, kids that are, you know, of the minority status here. It's, you're an important voice. You've got a wife who immigrated from the Ukraine, okay? Whose mother had very little. If it's anything like the stories that I've heard from friends that have immigrated, it's, it's a, just a heart-wrenching story, you know? And, and, and so you, you have a perspective that very few have. And, 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 you know, and, and you all I'm sure have served the poor and the disadvantaged in your roles by serving the community. So, so that's good for you. Good for each of you.
What I would add to that Vicki is, you know, my mother-in-law is one of our biggest supporters and she's an incredible person. And she does have concerns as to the direction that she sees our country going.
Yeah.
She lived through, you know, in an environment, a society where centralized decision-making was imposed upon the populace. And, you know, so she's very sensitive to those types of things when she starts to feel as if they're playing out, not only in our, our community here, but also broadly in our country. And yeah, it's, it's something that definitely is, is influential when it comes to stoking a desire to make sure that we see all sides of these, these positions and to make sure that we think things through before we act.
Yeah, we, we, we are, we are very fortunate to live in a country that embraces a democratic republic. And we can never lose sight of, of trying to preserve that. Because with that, every other liberty comes and stems from that. And, and if we do not preserve that democratic republic in every form, whether it's in our school system, our government, even where they, they are trying to wash away the family structure and go around parents and the family structure, it, the whole thing will collapse. It's like, it'll be like a house of cards. And, and so the, that's why the parent structure is so key to this. Because every place where that democratic foundation has been erased, they've, they've attacked the family. Because the family is the center unit that tries to preserve that. So I want to shift gears now. And, and talk, you know, a little bit, first I want to compliment the three of you for your incredibly well-done piece that was included in the October 11th feature in the Carmel Current. For anybody that hasn't read the Carmel Current, it was an insert piece and you can all correct me. I don't know if it was four or five pages, but it was an insert. I think it was after page 22. It wasn't numbered. It was a special insert and it was colored. It was all color. It was beautiful. And in this piece, you talk about why all three of you are running for the board. And the golden time in education was to give the children the basic tools to engineer their future. In that piece, you speak to the fact that some schools have shifted their focus from prioritizing academics and assumed the role, it was so well-written, of social activists imposing their own belief systems onto our children. So my major first question will be on academics. And to tie into this, I recently attended a Moms for Liberty event where, where there were posters in the back of the room that visually depicted some alarming test results being reported out of the Carmel Clay School District. So let me quote you some statistics off of those boards. In 2017, Carmel students were 87% proficient in math. But four years later, in 2021, they were 67 proficient in math. That is a 20-point drop. Likewise, in 2017, 88% of those kids were proficient in English, but only 66% proficient in 2021. So a lot of people say, well, okay, this is COVID, but that isn't true. I want to repeat, that is not true. Because what wasn't on the board is the fact that there has been a marked decline in test results since 2014. And the dissent has continued. So, okay. So now let's step back from the test results. Further concerning is that in 2021, there was an Indiana Chamber Employer Survey. And what they asked employers was, you know, what are some of the challenges in meeting your talent needs? 85% said that employers can't meet their talent needs because there isn't adequate talent. There's like not sufficient talent out there. There, they don't have even the right talent as they're coming out of high school. They don't have sufficient reading, writing, math skills to meet their needs. 85% employers said this. In a recent IBJ article, Indiana economic, economy depends on and thrives on an educated society. I think we'd all agree with that. Yet Indiana's educational attainment, it's not even close enough to where it needs to be. Employers are already struggling to find skilled talent. That search will only become more difficult if we do not increase the number of Hoosiers with the skills and training they need. So this was straight out of an IBJ article. And now according to a college completion report, if our children are not prepared in high school for college, they're not going to graduate from college. So there's just this overwhelming concern. Deteriorating educational performance is culpable for a weaker economic growth, employability, declining human capital. You know, the other thing is folks, it drives income, income inequality, easy for me to say. It drives income inequality. And because academic performance basically affects worker wages, as people of faith, we should all care and safeguard the dignity of every human person, which basically includes their long-term economic well-being. So this is a very long intro. You can tell I'm passionate about this. What do you think is the crux of the problem? And what will each of you do about the declining academic performance that we're seeing in the Carmel Clay Schools?
Yeah, let me, let me take off what you just said about those charts. I decided to run a year ago for school board without being networked in with young families in the schools. Because, you know, our child was an adult. But I didn't like what I saw going on in the nation with other school districts. And I told myself, I and my wife, that I don't want that to happen in Carmel. I don't know if it is or not, but I'm going to start looking at it. And I built this network with Jenny and Adam and others and dug in some data. And it is on its way here. It's well on its way. Looking at those charts, I watched the board meeting where they presented the charts you described. And, and the ones you were looking at were, we talked about extrapolating or going backwards in the data to 2014, like you said. But I actually wanted to use the chart from Amy Dudley. So it was just as they presented in the board meeting, but you're right. Go back to 2014, the numbers for proficiency were the 92 to 94% range. So it was on a downward trend since 2014. And then the people that like to argue that, you know, these are misleading numbers because they say that was I-step years and the latter years are a new program called I-Learn. So they say the big hit is because of that. But you can even say, okay, let's don't look to those older years. Let's just look at where we are now. To have a proficiency or a lack of proficiency of 30 to 40% in Carmel is unbelievable. And the, our people that are, were supporting, staying the course, they like to say that hey, we're the number three in the state right now. It's the most, how we just got rated. And, but that's like saying we're the long, so the short straws, I believe. More alarming is what might be going on if you look at Hamilton Southeastern, which is primarily Fishers. They were number four in the state. So they're very similar, I think, demographically to Carmel. They were number four, now they're number 16. So they're further along in what I, I am concerned is the decline. So I took a look at the school improvement plans that were issued for the school years 2019 to 22. Those are in those charts too, to see well, what, what might be our focus in the school district. What I found was that 48% of the, basically school improvement plan is, is the objectives that each school has. So I looked at the district and the 48% of the school districts improvement plans were focused on diversity, equity, inclusion programs and social emotional learning programs. So those are like social, I tend to call social engineering kinds of things. And it's not to say that we aren't focused on inclusion in the classroom. I look at it as a bigger issue of just bullying. We've had bullying in existence forever. We bully not just on skin color or gender preference, but we bully on how you look in other ways. You've got thick glasses or you're short or you're tall, you're this or you're that. And it should be intolerated or not tolerated in the classroom. So it's an old problem. It's going to always be with us. When I look at the emphasis on DEI and SEL, 48% across the district and you've got 16% is on technology, which I think is good. I'm an IT guy. But that leaves 36% on academic-related things. And I didn't really see when I looked at the specific objectives for the schools. And it was a real strong, like let's really work hard on math and social studies and things. But I'll give them credit. Now they got, they got some focus there, but what really caught my attention is when I looked at Carmel High School, just their school improvement plans, it was 100% on DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion and social emotional learning for the years 2019 through 22, 100%. So that tells me where I think the focus is. And I'm not drawing a direct correlation that proficiency scores are, are not where they should be to that, but it's certainly alarming. And I've heard school officials and others that are wanting to stay the course, they're now talking about, well, it was a COVID hit. So when you look at the aggregate numbers for the district, you know, we've edged up from 21 to 22, a couple of points. So now we're, we're right around 30%, not proficient. But when, what was really alarming, when you look at individual schools, like the I-Learn scores are grades three through eight. You see a really different picture than you do when you see them aggregated at that level where you see, you know, 30 to 40% are not proficient. What's interesting is there's, there are five schools of 13 that are considered in the I-Learn, the elementary and middle schools, third through eighth grade. And they range from looking at how they performed from 2019 to 2022. They went down 12, 13, 15, 16, almost 20%. One of the schools went down almost 20% from 2019 to 22. Okay. So he said, okay, maybe that was perhaps COVID, but that's a big hit. And what's really interesting is there's four schools in that same period that got better. So they got better during the COVID hit. One went up two, almost three, three and the 4.2%. So basically the question is, well, what are those schools doing? And what are the other schools not doing or what are they doing? And when you take a look at that. Now, you know, if you look at 21 to 22, you see a little bit better picture in that, yeah, it's like they're starting to pick up. But, you know, Carmel's got some really issues with it. So, and what you said going on with, in the businesses where they're really starting to see it. And I remember when I was still working, we would bring in kids in interns and I just saw a real lack of work ethic and seriousness and professionalism. And it's, it's just really alarming.
Yeah. Yeah. What, what an excellent response. I, I think one of the things that disturbs me from many of the other candidates that are running, a lot of their responses are that, well, we shouldn't really focus on test results. And I mean, that to me, and I don't, you don't even have to comment because what other objective measure are we supposed to use? I'm sorry to get upset about this, but as parents and as employers, that is the only objective measure that can be used to determine academic performance and proficiency. So, so that's, that's in essence saying, we shouldn't have any accountability for what we're teaching your children. And if you have a board candidate out there, folks, anybody that's watching this and you hear a board candidate telling you test results don't matter, well, you have your answer. Okay. I'm sorry. It's ridiculous. You don't even have to dignify it.
So how do you really feel about this?
Your point is well-taken. And, you know, we also look, we have varying perspectives as opposed to some of the other candidates that are running. And those other candidates tend to try to focus on painting the three of us in a light that I believe they, they feel or hope will scare folks into feeling as if we are not the best.
Um, or hope will scare folks into feeling as if we are not the best choice. It's, it's, it's sad, but it's kind of tried and true, um, political tactics. We decided that we were gonna stay above board and that, you know, we, it was best for us to. Just be very transparent and honest with the populace and, and convey to them, this is where we stand and. I think, you know, I'll speak for myself, but I think Jenny and Greg would agree with me on this, is one of our primary objectives in, in. Doing this work, committing this time and, and, and resource to this campaign, is to ensure that, that our, our community does have a choice. You know, we are, you know, democratic republic-type folks, we do believe that, you know, it is not up to us ultimately to decide the direction. That the, the, the school system goes on any given topic, it is up to the populace, because these are public schools. And these are their children. And, you know, one, one of, at least, one of my primary objectives in this campaign was just to say, look, our community deserves the opportunity to make a cho- a choice here. And they may choose to go one direction or another direction, but at least then we'll kind of have an understanding as to where the community at large stands, right? We have an incredible opportunity here, I mean, this whole system is massive. You know, north of two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar a year budget, you know. Thousands and thousands of kids, eighteen, nineteen thousand kids, sixteen thousand, you know. Sadly, we've lost five to seven hundred, I'd listen to debate around that number the last few years, parents are starting to. Um, decide that, that what Carmel Clay Schools is offering is not what they want for their children for a myriad of reasons. They've decided to start, um, looking into alternative educational options, whether those be private schools or homeschooling or virtual school. And I think it's important that we ask ourselves, why are parents doing that? Um, is it the quality of the academic, uh, education that their children are receiving? Is it because they feel as if the school has overstepped its boundaries when it comes to social? Um, in, in moral issues, um, that, that a lot of folks feel are in the domain of the family. Not in the domain of, especially of public school, I understand if you want to send your child to a private school to, 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 you know, uh, have greater exposure to specific belief systems. But in a public school, my sense is we should be fairly agnostic. And while we can expose our children to a wide variety of perspectives. To accentuate and emphasize certain perspectives over others. Um, I feel is somewhat irresponsible, um, it's, it's kind of like what you said we wrote in the article, you know. Rather than giving our children the tools to engineer their future, we seem to be focusing on engineering. The perspectives of, of this young populace and highly influential populace. Um, now that's a debate and, you know, we're very open-minded to having broad-based discussions about what isn't and is not, you know, appropriate. Um, but, you know, I think that the, the data kind of speaks for itself, when you have parents. That are pulling their kids out and you've got long wait lists developing in private schools. We have to ask ourselves, why are our citizens not satisfied with the direction that the system is going?
Yeah, very well said, you know, and, and, and we should question, I mean, when they see, you know, five hundred kids. Leaving the school district and that's never happened. You know, it's always grown, it's always grown.
And we're growing.
Yeah, 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 in, in a growing community, so it's not a shrinking community, it is a growing community. So they can't blame it on the fact that the community is shrinking, it is growing. So those kids are going somewhere and is it private, is it homeschool, what is it? Um, so, so parents are not happy. And they're, they're literally taking either upon themselves or they're paying money. To go elsewhere in addition to the taxes that they're paying, so, uh, so something has to be done. And, and, you know, you've done the homework to peel the layers of the onion away. To understand that there is this declining academic performance, so that is, that is the issue. But we still have to get to the heart of what can be done about it, you know, once you're on the school.